Welcome, everybody, this evening. Can we have any public comment?
We do not.
We do not, okay. That being said, we will start with the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the previous meeting, appropriations, select cabin transfers, which there are none tonight, application for retail liquor by the package, and club liquor licenses. This includes Hayes House, Twin Lakes Liquor, 1881 Liquors, Bee Gees, Bar &amp; Grill. Application for license to sell cereal and malt beverages.
Male beverages.
Male beverages, but male and female. And original containers, not for consumption on license premises for the Sour Rock Cafe. Application for license to sell cereal and malt beverages for consumption on premises for Sour Rock Cafe. Those are both the same.
They're different. One, they can sell off the premises. Somebody can buy it, come in and buy a six-pack and take it off the premises, and they can also consume on the premises. It's two different permits.
Two different permits. Both male and female. Do I hear a motion concerning the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Do you business Superior Systems? John, do you want to come up to the microphone?
Yes, ma'am.
You might not want to, but you get to.
Well, I want to first thank you folks for your time this evening. Come to a position that I thought long and hard about. Mr. Halverson asked me earlier about whether I had visited with the other municipalities that I contract with. I have. I've met with some of our larger companies here in town. Reached a point where I have to come to you folks to ask you for a rate increase. The inflation rate is, just like in our personal pocketbooks, has struck my company in every avenue, from general upkeep, labor, replacing equipment, fixing equipment, it's insurance. Everything's going up. And just reached a point that don't have a whole lot of options other than to ask for the rate increase. And I think it's a pretty fair increase that I'm requesting. The easiest way to break it down is $18 per year per billed customer or $1.50 per month. And then the weekly rate breakdown just depends on how many pickups there are in that particular month. There's some months, there's a month every quarter where there's five pickups versus four in a traditional month. That's why the weekly breakdown that I provided to you is kind of odd. But that's where I'm at. Do you folks have any questions of me?
I don't think so. Is everything right now kind of sitting on that edge? I don't think it's going to back up.
I know in the past, I'm just going to clarify this because I want to know, and I'm supposed to follow you if I can, too. In the past, I was told, back when I was just the city council, just about four, four and a half, five, perhaps, years ago, I was told that Superior also picked up the trash on Main Street in the trash cans. Is that still?
Every Monday morning. In fact, I want to say that's about their eighth stop that they start and they just run down one side of the street, turn around and come down the other side before going to the post office.
Okay, we will probably have a few more added to that simply because a lot of times they're overflowing, and so we've ordered new. And the placement, that might be just a slight big difference. There might be a few more of that. So I wanted to just verify that with you. And then, when I say "we've ordered", it's Pride. Pride takes care of those trash cans. They're the ones who buy those trash cans. And then, the other thing is, I know that at some time when we have events, and Nick, you can clarify that if I get it wrong, but like events like Wusheng Day stuff, we sometimes have to call you for extra, and that is included in our contract as well.
That's true. So that'd be separate. Wusheng Days is a chamber event.
Oh, so Wusheng Day is a chamber event.
Yeah, so he had to come make a special pickup.
Yeah, Nick called me and said, "Hey, this is the situation we have."
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, so whoever has that event, unless they contract to the city to have the city include that, if they rent like the amphitheater, we can do that, but they're going to be charged for it because he's going to charge us for extra.
Okay, I probably used maybe the wrong event, too. Like Fourth of July, that is included in the trashes in the parks and stuff.
That's all city stuff. City picks that up.
Correct.
City crews pick that up.
Okay, I didn't know. I'm just trying to clarify.
So if we have an event that requires extra trash cans, we call John.
Okay.
And John usually brings over the poly carts or dumpster or whatever for us to use.
Just so we can clarify that, the council, all of those. We do have new people, and I know it could have changed since I was on council years ago.
And that's why I broke down this allocation, is not everybody is aware. I remember Mr. Brooks was on the council, I believe, when this came forward, and you may have been also. That's the only reason I gave you the two breakdowns for the two calendar years. As far as any containers being placed in the city for events such as the Fourth of July, yes. If Mr. Jones reaches out to me and says, "Hey, we have this going on. We need more containers." I'm going to make it happen. It's just part of it.
Traditionally, what I recall is how this was set up was if your fuel costs went up, then the company could come forward and ask for a raise. But it really doesn't matter, whatever your cost increases are. If you need a raise, you need a raise.
Right. And it didn't necessarily the fuel. Last year, I was teetering on the edge of having to look at making requests to the three municipalities when I raised our quarterly and monthly rates. But it worked out that I did end up qualifying for some PDP money and was able to offset it. This year, I didn't qualify for it.
Okay, do you have any questions or comments? Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve the rate and dispersment increase from Superior Systems. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I just appreciate they're there when they say they're going to be, and it's always picked up. You guys do a good job.
Appreciate the extra effort you guys did.
Yeah, and we appreciate you helping us out. Wusheng Days, too.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, and Merry Christmas.
You too, also.
Okay, next we have Story Media and the Verbal Office, their webpage. Deirdre and Lindsay. I think we all have them.
They have those already? Okay, perfect. Then we can just pull the website.
Yep, on the other side, we have to go through it.
Yeah, sounds good.
Sorry. Oh, okay.
Maybe some assistance.
Yeah.
Never mind. It's working out.
If I have to shut the power down.
It's not working, though.
I think maybe first we can talk about a little like what you guys have looked over so far. Any questions that you have just off the top of your head that we could go over? Anything that you want to start with? We are open, willing, and ready to start with, so.
Deirdre, what cities did you compare when you were looking at, you know, other facilities similar to this and rates and so forth?
Sure. I know Manhattan was one of them. We pulled a bunch of information from really all over the country. When we met with Debbie and Nick this summer was when we first talked about the rates and booking information for the amphitheater.
Did you break the internet?
No, I never spell amphitheater correctly. A-M-P-H. M-A-M-P-H. That's what I'm missing. I'm missing something.
Amphitheater. Amphitheater.
There we go.
It gets me about every time, too.
I get three words. Amphitheater.
So would be sent this information, this was just, you know, stuff that we came up with. So it can be whatever you all wanted to be. This was just.
Yeah, and we looked at rates on other, like in other states that we're trying to compare just something that was similar to what we have. And it was hard to find something exactly like we have because some places offer lots of extras and some places are a lot smaller venues. And Nick also asked us to look at some wedding venues as well to compare what rates were for those. And so knowing what some places' venues here in town charge, we based it off of that as well.
Manhattan had a really good model and a lot of information, like mapping to get to the O to wherever they have their events and, you know, parking and all that. And they've included a lot of that stuff in this. And then they also looked at, like she said, weddings and stuff like that. Events that we thought that would probably take place down there. I think obviously these numbers change once we get bathrooms and different things because you don't have those amenities right now. So you're looking at charge for something you don't have.
But there might be extra costs now with having to get extra porta-potties and things like that, too.
So would that be the responsibility of the renter, then?
No, so if you go on this here.
How about I miss it maybe? Oh, schedule. Sorry, I couldn't read. Put down that one. I'm a little concerned about the security deposit. I don't feel that it's near enough. It wouldn't take long to do $100 damage. Is that what we're talking about, mammoth? Or even picking up trash, that kind of thing? It wouldn't take long to.
They have a shared care deposit at the home reserve box, isn't it?
I think so.
Yeah, plus a cleaning.
I can just see where if somebody left, you know, a jillion beer cans laying around, it wouldn't take long to spend $100 to get them picked up.
Say you have to dump them for half a day.
Well, we have to.
And then get that back.
I think you can say something about extra damages. I don't remember exactly if that was included in there, but when they sign their contract, if there's extra things, they could be liable for those things, too. You could speak to the legalities of having some of those things in there.
Speaking of liable, would we have to have them have some sort of insurance liability to make the, free the city from being, you know, let's say there's somebody does a concert there and they've rented it from us, but then somebody falls and breaks their neck. What's the gal?
I'm pretty sure the chamber, when they do Wusheng Days, they have their own insurance.
Right, but I'm just wondering.
So they're having big events.
Incorporate that into this or not?
Right.
Yeah, you could require renters to carry an umbrella policy for event insurance.
And that definitely would be a good idea because there would be liability. I suppose if it fell to the city, our umbrella liability would cover us, but even so.
I think big events like that. Now, if you're talking, people have birthday parties and weddings at the parks, so they don't have extra insurance for those type of things. I think that falls into the umbrella of just the city's umbrella.
Yeah, but this could lead into having a band at your wedding and other things. It could get pretty big.
And of course, it always turns on whether the city would be in any way negligent. Probably would not be in a situation. But even so, it's cheaper to insure against those things than it is to defend against them, even if you have a good defense.
That might be something that would not hurt to check with our insurance company and see if they could have a rider or something that people could, we could just say, "This is available here if you don't have your own." You know, you'll have to pay for it, but it is available to burn extra so many dollars or whatever you call it. I don't, just a curiosity.
I can call, try and see.
And it would probably be fairly inexpensive for just one of the.
Sure.
Well, Fourth of July, I think it's when we buy an extra one for that because that's not covered under the city. It'd cost like 500 bucks for Fourth of July. We'd be down at Bolton Company.
Fireworks bring that price up.
Actually, it was 500 bucks, about 500 bucks.
No, I mean, probably a normal policy wouldn't be that high. It's because of the fireworks.
Yes. So, yeah, we didn't look at that in.
I would say that private events and public events are a little bit different as far as that insurance piece goes because it would not be typical that someone would take out an insurance policy for a wedding reception. But for a public event, that would be typical.
And I'm thinking about weddings. We got married at the art gallery in Lomigo, and we didn't have to take out insurance to rent that and they had art in there. But you signed an agreement. They said you're responsible for any damages or whatever. But we didn't have an insurance policy for that for the wedding.
Wouldn't we maybe need two different contracts, one for private and one for public? I mean, this, to me, looks like it's generic for both. But to me, we would need one from private.
You can change tiles and change the.
Because public event, I guess I'm reading this different than you guys are or something, or looking at it a little different. Maybe I didn't come across when we talked about some money. But to me, if somebody's going to come in here and rent our amphitheater, put in a huge concert, make all kinds of money, I don't think that we should just get paid $300. Do you all understand what I'm saying?
That would be, okay, so. So if they were going to rent, though, if it was going to be a big concert, they would have to do this bigger package. That's the park and the amphitheater. That would be the whole thing. So if it's just a small concert that's just an hour long, someone's going to play or two hours long, however, they could do the $300 package. But if they're doing a big event, they're going to have to pay for the whole park price. Does that make sense?
Does everybody think $500 is enough for a full day? I do not.
Well, it's probably about a dollar a ticket.
Well, the reason I'm saying that, and like I said, I'm thinking with somebody like Martina McRae. Let's just use an example because she's from Kansas. You know, I know that when I do shows, and it's been years since I've done it, but I go to a venue like in Washington DC or, you know, Atlanta or down in Dallas, and we pay $1,200 for a 12 by 12-foot square. Okay, it is a two-day event as a rule. But we still have to pay for everything else, too. I mean, if we want electricity, we pay extra. We pay all this, and I'm thinking this doesn't include any fees for electricity, and these people stand to make a lot more money than.
And that's something that, too, we could do add-ons. So we didn't add this in here if there was extra for different electricity or if the city is going to purchase things, equipment, sound equipment, anything like that, then those can be extra add-ons that you could add on as a package. Does that make sense?
It does. It does. But I still, my question is still this. And I'm just trying to look out for, I'm not trying to be greedy. I'm trying to look out for the city's interest here. And that is, somebody comes in here and they sell tickets for $130 apiece, and they bring it, because some of them will. Some of these venues will bring, you know, some of these bands and stuff would bring that kind of money. So they come in, they rent our amphitheater. They stand to make a lot of money, and the city's going to end up with a $500. Do you see what I'm saying? I mean, I'm not sure that, I think that's fair to the people of the city to use their venue for that. Now, I understand.
You could set up a sliding scale on the number of.
How large the amount would be.
How large the event is.
I mean, I'm dreaming big, you know.
But I mean, obviously, even the first two to five years, you're going to grow reputation first, and then you can grow dollars second.
Sales tax dollars.
That's a good point. That is a good point.
I guess I would have a question going back to my original question I asked Deirdre. When you looked at other cities and other venues, was that like with them doing the same thing as far as renting to somebody who's going to bring a concert in and they're going to make a lot of money off of? Did that change their fee schedule at all?
There were some that were probably triple these prices. But they were larger venues that offered things and had bathrooms, and they had staging areas for people to get dressed. They had dressing rooms. They have all those things. And our amphitheater doesn't have those things.
Not there yet.
Yeah, not yet. Yeah.
Well, I guess, Mayor, whatever we come up with, it can be just the start.
And that's fine. I just throw those questions out there.
It can change and mutate however it needs to as time goes because, you know, they have no idea what it's going to be.
I think Manhattan was the one that had the add-ons, correct? If you're going to need someone to put in this extra charge, if you're going to need somebody to run it, it was this extra charge.
Spider boxes, shillings.
Yeah, so we can add all that stuff.
I'd be curious to know what kind of an energy pool. You know, we talk about the electricity fee, you know, a big band, golden lights and all that.
What is that transformer out there?
We have flame powered on.
But, you know, it all costs money.
Well, I guess it's live and learn, you know, agreed. I mean, I just, my concern was that. I just thought, you know, if we get, work gets out and people say, "Hey, that's a great place to go, and you're going to sell tons of tickets, and you're going to make a lot of money, and the fee's only $500." But we can always change it.
Yeah, oh, for sure, yeah. And there's sales tax dollars that are earned, too, for the city when there's.
I was getting ready to say that.
So you're making more than just the 500.
It is metered down there, right? There is a, you know, we could kind of keep an eye on that to see if it's electricity that is to be concerned. You know, it may not even be an issue.
Well, like I said, I'm dreaming big, but I can, you know, I just foresee if we have a lot of great big bands coming on, you know. So, okay, well, that was my question. I asked, again, the security deposit. They get that money back, so I think maybe we would raise that.
To half of what the rental fee is of 500 to 250?
Why wouldn't you just do the whole thing upfront?
That's true, too. It's like renting an apartment. It's whatever the rent is for that.
Security deposit and first one's rent.
Yeah, so you can do it for 500. Deposit 500, 500 for your rental.
And they know that they can get that back.
Do you need incentive? I know when we're doing, what was it? 25 bucks or something to the arm where everybody just left a damn mess over there and we always ended up cleaning it up. And then we raised it $200 and everybody cleans up after this.
Well, it's hard to find laborers. Where are we going to find a mechanic?
For 25 bucks, you're telling me I have to be over and clean up after an event. This is going to take me a couple hours. I'm like, well, 12:50 an hour. I'll let you guys do it for 25 bucks. Same thing for, and there you have a decent-sized event for 100 bucks, I'm probably going to tell you to go ahead and take care of it.
And this way, because we want them to take care of it. You know, I mean, this is good and saving money. It's good and saving.
Did you notice if anybody else was using that kind of sliding scale for the size of the event?
Without contact, I mean, without contacting a model. A lot of the event venues take a portion of ticket sales. So I'm talking specifically about concerts. So that's a totally different animal and currently, we're not equipped to handle that kind of traffic. But it would be, if you have, you know, 20,000 tickets sold, you would take, the house would keep a certain percent. But this is a little bit of a.
Where do we wind up totaling for seating capacity here?
There's 1,100, and then you have all kinds of seating up and around.
Yeah, that's shoulder to shoulder, too.
I mean, how many tickets do Wusheng Days sell? 4,600 or 46?
I don't really know.
No, it's under 5. I think it was 45 or 4600s that they sold for Wusheng Days. And granted, there's all those people who went up there at the same time, but still.
Well, the little mosh pit or whatever you want to call it down below can hold a lot of people, too.
Yeah, it's an apron.
It's a work in progress, basically.
So do you guys want us to work on the add-ons? Additional costs for, like, renting spider boxes and all that? And then change the deposit fee to $500? And then make two different forms, one for weddings and events like that and one for.
Commercial events.
Yeah, commercial events. I guess would be a good way to say it.
I think we'd be better off starting that way than trying to slide that, go that way. I mean, I think maybe if we get started that way rather than just kind of finagle on this a little bit, I think we might be, it might be easier in the end.
Well, I think there's going to be stuff as we go through this that we're going to have to learn. There's no way we're going to know everything because we've never done it.
That's right.
You can look at everybody's, the way everybody's done it, but until you actually do it.
Do it, yeah.
So basically, we're talking security deposits the same as the rental fee?
Yes. Two different forms, two separate forms. And then add-ons, if you're having a concert or an event and need spider boxes or whatever, cords, things like that.
We might need to talk to, like Rodney or somebody right now and see how much porta-pots cost per.
They're $75 a day.
And how many you need per person? Like, if somebody's going to have 500 people versus 25.
Yeah, when they fill out the form, I think, I don't know if the form has that on there or not. Yeah, so that's on the form already. So that would, whenever they call to book that, that's something that they'd be able to call Rodney So that would, whenever they called or booked that, that's something that they'd be able to call Rodney and figure out with Rodney. Like, there's a hundred people, two, five hundred people here, how many porta potties?
And so they contract the porta pott's, not us?
No, we do.
Yeah, we would, we would have to control that.
Where people rent it, we're responsible for the, that's the reason you have the add-on and all that stuff. We're responsible for that 'cause we're charging them a fee to use the facilities. And we don't have, we don't currently have restaurants there, so we have to provide.
Kind of the same with waste, trash cans. I mean, really, there'd be a lot of difference with twenty people, like I said, or fifty people, let's do five hundred.
Porta potties, they would cover the cost of those, but we would get them set up for them.
They would, whoever rents it, is that what you said?
Would pay for them? Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So if we had a...
We would facilitate getting them down there, is what I'm saying.
Okay, gotcha. So if we had a lot here, twenty to twenty-five, it'd be this much, thirty to forty or what?
Well, they'll put their number down and then Deidre and Lindsay can talk to them about, okay, so they can call Rodney and see how much it would cost, how many porta potties it would be for this number of people. And then, 'cause you're not gonna get all answers, questions answered in one phone call with somebody on rent the venue. Does that make sense?
It does. I just think that to be as transparent as we can, when people get offline and they see this, that they go, oh, well, we're gonna have a hundred people, it's gonna cost us an extra twenty dollars for another porta... You know what I'm saying? It'd be nice if they knew ahead of time rather than...
Well, we can call Rodney and he can...
He can tell us.
I don't know if he has that information or not. One porta pott takes care of twenty people and you have a hundred people, that'll tell you how many porta potties.
I mean, I know that's kinda frivolous, but yet, when you're, when you're budgeting a wedding, you need to know all those things. You know, or the party or whatever else.
And then if we're gonna mow the venue area special, not on a scheduled mowing, that's extra, extra time that our employees are being put...
Well, it gets, it gets mowed, nothing gets mowed all the time, sometimes. I mean, we're always over there and we need... There's not, I don't know of a time, other than when it rains and the dress over is tall. So...
There's some things like that, but we can get together with you guys a little bit more on that and kinda point out a few more of those things, if that's okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Good start.
Yeah, he does kinda dispense like on the nonprofit and civic grants, what's that kinda traditionally do?
We don't know.
We can do whatever, whatever you all say.
And we were thinking like the Arts Council, if they're gonna have music there.
Like punk bands or something.
Yeah.
I think my deal with the nonprofits and stuff is a lot of them getting money from us for sales tax grant to have the event. And we're gonna charge them for the venue to take our money back from them. This is kinda like, is that how we wanna do it? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So we're giving, you know, like Wushun Days, we give them fifteen to twenty thousand dollars to advertise and do all this stuff and let them use the venue and say, okay, now we did all this, will you give us our money back? I don't know if that's what you guys wanna do. We haven't done that since I've been here, so...
That could almost be where they could come in and ask for a variance like they do with the armory, you know? Could we get a variance not to pay this? You know, like the Arts Council could come in and say...
Ask to use it.
Ask to use it, it'd be like on a case by case.
The event they're having and things like that.
'Cause it depends on...
Because obviously, if they're having a private event, it doesn't create tax revenue. I mean, I don't know that you wanna just let them use it, 'cause the city does have cost in that.
Yeah, like if they were just thinking people are...
Yeah, the city reg board kinda got to the point where they didn't feel like they should give those variances because the building still costs so much to maintain it and...
It's the same thing down here, you know, is that park develops, it costs them more to take care of, it costs them more to insure.
You know, it could be a thing where if they come in and ask for a city sales grant, you just give them the amount, and minus the amount you would've charged for the venue. You just give them less that amount. And then...
I don't know, we, we discuss that some more. 'Cause I think you're doing that to me, I may request more money so I can still get the same money. That's what I would do if I was...
Then come in and say, we want five thousand dollars plus...
Five thousand dollars, you give us fifty-five, someone requests fifty-five to cover that, so I get the five thousand we need. I can see that happening, so...
Yeah.
Well, we've got a good start. I guess we, I think we went to conclusion tonight, but I'm glad that was got started.
Those would be case by case basis. If the Girl Scouts wanted to use it for something, you know, would you charge them? I just, I think they would have to maybe come to the council. That could be a decision case by case basis.
I had a question on the security deposit. I understand the fact that it would be the same as the five hundred dollars for a full day. Is that gonna apply five hundred for the other two? And then you have listed on here for three hundred dollars and a half day for one fifty, do you wanna have a five hundred dollar security?
I think at that time, I think whatever, so the half day should be a half day, so if it's two fifty, the deposit needs to be two fifty. If it's one fifty, it needs to be one fifty. I think for whatever you choose, the deposit matches what you're paying to rent.
Okay.
I think the five hundred came into big events.
Right.
Is what we were talking about that time.
Yep.
So, okay. Do you guys want me to click through the website and show you guys everything?
Yeah.
And hopefully, we can meet sooner than later with them so we can get this running for the new year.
Yeah, I think first of the year we can get together.
Uh-huh. Has it, this'll be the beginning of the season.
Oh, I see that. Are you want me to turn some lights off so you can see it?
I can see it.
Well, you're pretty close there, Jason. There's a little Sharon and Larry and Mark.
I'll just scroll through and then I can go back and check some other names first. And obviously, these will be updated after other, as other things happen. Yeah, there's just a few from Wushun Days. And there's a "We'd Contact Us," a map, and then there's a few EQs. And then also has a map that has just gen, like the general area where parking would be. We've talked about doing more of an aerial map instead of using a Google map. So you can really see where the amphitheater is, but there's something for now. Up here, there is EQs and also a link to the calendar of events for the city. So that way, everything that's happening in the city, so if you are planning something, you would know that there's already something happening that day. This booking platform, we need to add more to it just because with the rates, but these are the same options as what are on the form.
Yeah.
The half day, so we can update the pricing for any of these things. If you wanted to book for a half a day, you would click here and it would go to a form that would look just like this. Where you can, where it'll be an online form, where you can add all your information of the number of events, like your date, everything, a short description, everything that's on this form as well. That way, we will know everything upfront. This isn't set up yet because this is a live website, so we didn't want people to think they could go ahead and book. Any questions or anything else?
Looks good.
There's a "Contact Us" over there, I saw that, and, and...
This "Contact Us," it comes down here, so you can contact us.
I'll say, when they contact, do the, is that "Contact Nick, City Hall," or is that "Contact you guys"?
Yes, it's the City Hall app. And we see those through the website. We can see those through the website.
Okay, so we can get back to, is there something that then tells you that you've got the message runs through to your, your email right away so that people get, get in contact pretty quick? Okay, good. 'Cause that was something I was asking about, how long does it take?
Sure, Mark Burner said something about the initial rule, he figured out being right in the middle and kinda covering the picture of the people and he didn't know if that could be changed around.
Maybe to the left or something down, left lower?
That was just, that's one thing he had a comment on, really.
You're gonna cover people somewhere, so...
Yeah, I get what you're saying.
Fortunately, there's people there.
But some of them are fine, so whatever.
We can add this same photo down here as well, so you can get an idea of what the venue looks like.
That's a cool idea.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Get a good sunset picture behind there too. You could also factor in some seasonal rates too. If you're gonna have prime time between May and September, offseason rates to help promote an offseason too.
I think it says on that, I don't know if we've got all of these pages on here, but there was...
Yeah, I think the third page is...
It missed missing a rental agreement. I think it said what, in May to October, or maybe it wasn't May, March to October, I think is what we had on there. But we can change that to anything. I just didn't know if you wanted to rent it out in January, where there's ice.
Ski council.
Yeah, maybe. It's on the second page under...
Keep having these mild winters when it's right on head of season.
Winter change to January, February now.
Get us a couple of snow guns.
I snow in March, April, July.
And I think I got those months off of the one from Manhattan that I agree with that you gave us.
Will there be someplace in here to actually describe the size of the stage area, the size of... Just to look at a picture, they might not have an understanding of, and distances, distances for ticket patrons to come in. Probably there's some, in terms of access to it, lower stage and upper stage, all of that kinda information. Will that be somewhere here?
Yeah, I don't, I can't remember exactly what was on that other page that's missing. I think it talks about parking. Yeah, so on the third page, definitely any information you have that needs to go in here, please send it to us. But on the third page, there is in the other category...
You have the third page?
No.
It's okay, it's, it's just a three-page document and I think the third page didn't run or something. You know how that goes. So there's notes in here about noise ordinances, parking, events that wish to block parking in our entrances, so far must make arrangements, at least six weeks prior to rental date, additional fees, we cannot guarantee renters that will block parking and park entrances. So yeah, maybe just, if Nick maybe could email this
I'll email it out.
Digital format to you all. And then maybe just make as many notes as your heart desires and the next time we get together, we could make a vision, if that's okay with you all. There is, I think on the second page that you have some notes about the stage sound and lighting, but that's probably a good place for those distances to go. If you have those distances, we can add them in. There is notes about power availability to two hundred amp service at the stage, other outlets throughout the park, things like that. So yeah, anything that needs to be added for sure, we can get in there.
Absolutely. Evidently, some of that's on the third page that we are... I, I think we might be missing page two, not page three. What, what's that? I think we're missing page two, not page three.
But what's that one state that's in your hands?
It says transportation, trolley, it doesn't have anything about hand free.
Oh, that's the third page.
Yeah, we have the third page, we're missing page two.
So you're missing the second page. Okay, so the second page has rental rates and reservation second section, so it's clear that power availability, soundstage and lighting information.
Yeah, that's why we have two questions.
We'll send that back out to you, I don't know why I didn't send it.
That'd be something about the handicap areas.
Might be a good idea for us to make our list and send it to Nick so he can collate it and get it to them.
Let's do that.
So council ideas to, next, email. Cause we all may all have the same question, in a way. Okay, that sounds good.
So I think on the website, there was just the one note about the picture, is that it?
Yeah, that was the thing that Mark brought up, just thought it was distracting, so I don't know what you guys can, I can't...
Okay, thank you guys.
Is that, is that fairly easy? I've never done any website stuff. Is that fairly easy to swap out pictures, add pictures, do that kind of thing?
Lindsay's a wizard.
It is if you know how to do it.
If you know how to do it, yeah.
It's impossible for me.
Okay, thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas to you guys too.
You too, thank you.
If you didn't bring any beer, I'm a little disappointed, but...
We gotta go there. It's a beautiful venue.
Thank you.
I'd love one on Christmas Eve where everybody get ready to hear the world's best.
Okay, moving along. Lake Committee Recommendation for HS1.
The City Lake Committee recommends the City Council approve a variance request of six foot to the hundred-foot high water setback for construction of a covered deck. This is for Scott and Beth McGinn, HS1. The neighbor, the essential will not restrict or interfere with the neighbor in the cabins or access to the area. The neighboring leaseholds are aware of the request and have indicated such in writing. And Keith and Larry can tell you anything you wanna know about it, 'cause they both looked at it.
Does anybody have any questions back? Okay, do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve Lake Committee Recommendation for HS1 for variance request of six foot to the high, to the hundred high water...
Hundred-foot high water.
High water setback for construction of a covered deck. All is in favor. Opposed? Motion carries four one. Do you guys have any time to talk about that?
Uh, that thing's a monstrosity.
I understand.
We're gonna end up covering that whole lake with buildings like that, so yeah, that's, that's life.
Okay. The next one, Utilities Committee Recommendation, hiring rate.
So Utilities Department met last Thursday and discussed, we were actually doing an interview in outdoors, we had a discussion about pay and everything like that. And I think it's been over a year since we've been able to hire a direct person for the Water Department. And the conversation kinda went to what some of the other areas of businesses in town are paying. I've also had people say they would've applied for the city job, but they can make more working at New Frax, making, starting at fifteen or Dairy Queen or wherever here in town. So when we originally did the water rate increase, we did that in order, once, with the thought of when we announced the lake, we're gonna have to have more help for out there. So we actually have the ability to hire up to eight people. I think what we're trying to do is hire just two more. But in order to attract people, you need to, you need to be competitive and that's what we'd like to raise the rate from fourteen to fifteen dollars an hour, which is still within our sliding scale with the new pay plan. So, you know, we won't have to change anything 'cause it's already a part of the sliding scale.
And so if you were hiring somebody on new...
They start at fifteen.
We also felt like that the dollar rate should be given to all the employees.
Yeah, and I have that, that's in the packet too, so we're gonna discuss that after this is approved.
So it's, it's a new hire plus the three?
So then, so the three guys that are currently here, they all started at fourteen dollars an hour. In order to create separation, you need to apply that also to your current employees that are here, which is what we done when we did the change over at the Street Department. We changed pay to make sure that it's equitable for everybody.
I'm getting ready to go off the council, but I will tell you that this has just been an ongoing problem for this department that just cannot keep anybody and, or cannot get anybody to apply. And the discussion was that, not that any of our other departments aren't important, but these employees have to be constantly doing education and doing classifications and taking certification classes. There is a little bit of difference here in this, in this...
It's similar to the Police Department. You know, those guys have to go to training and get, and do hours to keep their certifications and so on and so forth. The only difference here is these guys get hired on and they have to work for a year before they can take their first test. And once they get their first test taken, and we're gonna discuss this this spring, before March sometime, with the new, whoever's on the new committee, about paying more for the certifications. But I think right now, we pay a dollar for a certification, well, it's a lot of work to get a certification and maintain it. We wanna have clean drinking water, people work now, then we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to be a little bit better on pay about it 'cause there's a lot of things you couldn't live without, but water's probably not one of them, so...
Plus, like you said, there, you know, there, we've got a lot of competition and they're on call.
And they're also on call on weekends. There's always somebody working Saturdays, Sundays, going to the plant, working in the plant for three, four hours on a Sunday, so, or a Saturday, Sunday.
And we, when we had our meeting about getting some engineering done on water area, water, water pipes and sewer, Derek said at that meeting, he said, the line along Columbia is very fragile, very, very fragile, breaks all the time. That evening when I went home, they, they're down there digging up a break that evening.
They done at, mm, twelve forty-five that night.
Late night in the cold.
Yeah, twelve forty-five that night they got done.
But it's a, it's a constant struggle for this department. They cannot get ahead. He can't, you know, he can't get in the office and be doing the things he needs to be doing because he's out there training and, and working with people that aren't, you know? And we've gotta get some longevity in this department somehow.
So anyways...
Is there, I mean, basically talking about the four guys raising them a dollar an hour, are you looking at an extra eight thousand dollars a year in salary?
Well, you can figure eighty hours, paper, twenty-six papers, like six thousand four hundred twenty dollars, or a map on it, something like that.
Yeah.
So it's additional, basically sixty-five hundred dollars a year, I wish.
We're good with that?
Yeah, it's fine.
So, do you want to hear a motion?
I'd make a motion that we raise the rate to our point by dollar an hour.
I'll second it.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to raise the hourly rate for Utilities Committee to a dollar an hour. All is in favor. Opposed? Motion carries five one. I'm five zero, I mean, we're not...
Is that beginning January first?
Everything's January one, new budget year.
Okay, so we kinda did this backwards, right? I mean...
No, we had to approve the pay increase in order to give the guys, does that make sense? We had to approve the pay increase.
It's just backwards on the paper here.
How's it backwards on the paper? I'm confused.
This was just for the starting wage is what we just...
Yeah, the starting wage has nothing to do with the second one.
Oh, all right, right, okay.
And then you're gonna raise it to...
Then we're gonna raise it to three.
I didn't see the current, okay.
Yep, so...
My, my bad, sorry about that. Okay. All right, so go ahead, Nick, I'm sorry.
So this one's the Utilities Recommendation, Committee Recommendation to give three current employees that we have raises, a dollar raise in order to be ahead of other people, or new people we hire. So Jesse Pavik's current rate is fourteen fifty, his new hourly rate would be fifteen fifty. He's passed his backflow... He's passed his, uh, backflow test, which is why he already has the fifty cent raise. And then Davis Simmers is at fifteen seventy-eight, he's actually passed his water one, and he's also passed the backflow, which is why he's at fifteen seventy-eight. So he'd be at sixteen seventy-eight with a dollar. And Michael Stover would go to fifteen, he has not passed, um, any test yet, so.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to raise those three people's wages at all?
And this would be effective January one as well.
So move.
Okay, second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded to raise the current employee rate for a dollar each, a dollar an hour, individual, all is in favor. Motion carries five zero.
All right, finally, Utilities Committee Recommendation, the Utilities Committee recommends the appointment of Nathan Ross to Utilities Department Apprentice, an hourly rate of fifteen an hour, deployment is contingent on passing a physical, drug, and alcohol screening.
Okay. So at this time, um, I would like to appoint Nathan Ross to that position. And I would entertain a motion to approve that appointment.
So move.
Okay, Jason. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Sharon? It's moved and seconded to approve the appointment of Nathan Ross, um, at the amount, in the amount of fifteen dollars to the Utility Department, all is in favor? Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay, and with that, we're down to the executive session.
Bill, thirty minutes.
Yeah. Three zero.
At this time, make a motion that we, uh, go into executive session, attorney-client privilege with the council mayor or city attorney, and next, for thirty minutes.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to go into executive session for thirty minutes with the council mayor, the city manager, and our attorney for attorney-client privilege, City Light, all is in favor? Motion carries five zero.
I figured out it was Sarah, but I was like, well, surely she.
Oh, Sarah? It was Sarah?
Yeah, I think she knew you had a meeting, but it sounded kind of early, so.
That's okay, that, uh.
Yeah.
Well, I'll check real quick, my mom's.
I can tell you that is, right when I came out of the rainfall, that's what I came out, started adulting in, was those high entry rates. And.
Sarah doesn't know.
This has chased me ever since, I never could get ahead of that.
Yeah, yeah.
Deal, you know?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mindy.
Yeah. Okay, we're back, um. Let's go to governing body for a minute. Let's start with, Nick, let's start with you.
I don't have anything, everybody has a Merry Christmas, if I don't see a Happy New Year. I think we've done a lot of great things in two thousand twenty-one, and we're moving the city in the right direction, in my opinion, so.
Okay. Bill?
I don't have anything there, thank you.
Jason?
Merry Christmas, thank you for the great meal today out at the Armory, that was fun. Two concerns I have, uh, the condition of Jennings Street and Sunset Drive in between Main Street and Diversicare.
Jennings and Sunset, what's the concern?
Oh, they're just Jennings Street.
It's rough?
Yeah, it's rough.
Yeah, I don't know.
And, and so is Sunset, really.
Yeah, those roads, um.
I got the feeling they were quick forward over some rocks, and the rocks are moving and.
Do you know much about that? I would, I don't know.
Jennings, I'm trying to remember.
Jennings is over there by the Christian church on the other end of town.
South and East Street.
Where we go, across from the cemetery.
It was originally quite a, it's an alley.
It's an al, it was an alley, the guys worked on it, we put millings and stuff over there, and stuff like that.
That's true.
It's been like that for.
The original Jennings was. Somewhere in there, all the way, we need to make a plan to make that a real street.
So, yeah, we can look at it.
Sunset, Sunset's gotta be rough, just, I don't know why that one is as rough as it is. I imagine it's just what it's built over, but.
Yeah.
Because it's fine, once you get to Diversicare and go on out, it's just that couple of blocks between Main Street and Diversicare.
Yeah, move out.
It's all narrow, too.
Uh, I just, so, just one quick thing, uh, I want to wish everybody Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year as well, and, and thank you for, if we've had a good year, look forward to another good year. The other thing I wanted to, uh, compliment, the limb pickup, the Street Department has done a fantastic job and, and the guys really stepped up and loving beyond.
Yep, they're doing more than picking up storm limbs.
Yeah.
People are trimming their trees and stacking pile. I think one residence, they told me they picked up three truckloads, because they just decided to trim their yard and everything, so. But we picked it up.
Okay, Mark?
Where you try to go on Sunset, there's a sign there for Diversicare and some other things. There's a large cottonwood tree there, um, that's on our property that, that has some major limbs that are blocking the view of that sign.
Yeah, that's on, we have that, I think you talked to me about that a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, that needs to be taken care of.
Yep.
And again, going off the council, we really never got around to working on the, um, in-town campgrounds. I, I hope that the council will move forward on that and, and get that done, so, that's all I have.
Okay. Larry?
I have nothing this evening, ma'am.
Sharon?
Hope you all have a great holiday, um, and it's been a good year. It really feels good to look back at some of the things that have been accomplished, and it's been a busy year for the town, and city has just worked crazy to keep it all going, so, appreciate it all.
Yeah, Merry Christmas to everybody.
And I do not have anything other than to say thank you to everybody, and Merry Christmas to everybody, have a safe holiday, and Happy New Year.
Mayor, when does the term change?
So, first meeting in January, so January fourth.
So this will be your last meeting?
I'll have a half a meeting and the next meeting.
So he'll, he'll do the old business, and then I'll swear in Sean and whoever else was up here, you should go back to the oath. I don't, I don't know, we did that last time, did we?
Normally, you should do it, but.
We can't, well, everybody that's new, back, back on council and new is supposed to go back to the oath.
So the Keith and Mark and.
Yep, yep. And Debbie.
Well, Nick Mark, just speaking for myself, in the time I've been here, I think you deserve congratulations for the work you've done on the council.
Well, thank you.
I agree.
It's over a decade.
Expect a few phone calls from me.
I told you, I said, don't turn, don't change your phone number.
I expect some phone calls from me, calling my council.
You're complaining, though, that.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll second it.
All is in favor? Motion carries five zero.